First, I'd like to do um call to order. I see Valerie Woodall.
I'm here.
Jared Stoffes?
I'm here.
Okay, and those are dealing to, I see Jimmy this day that he was gonna be, um, he's coming from Annapolis. So if need be for quorum, he would jump in. All right, so Vice Mayor, can you please send us a pledge of allegiance?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Jared. Can we move on to review of the agenda, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. So I'm gonna read through the agenda. The agenda, the legislative meeting of Mayor and City Council, City Mount Rainier. Tuesday, April 4th, 7:00 PM. Number one, call to order and pledge of allegiance. Number two, review of the agenda. Number three, may and council member event announcements. Number four, update and discussion on 3200 Rhode Island Avenue. Uh, number five, public comment. Number six, closed session summaries from March 21st, 2023, and March 25th, 2023. Uh, and number seven, introduction and first reading ordinance, uh, number four dash 2023, amending ordinance 10 dash 2022, defer the effective date thereof until January 1st, 2024, and then declaring the council's intent to be bound by the terms of Prince George's County CB 007, 2023 through December 31st, 2023, 15 minutes. Number eight, vote on approval of minutes. And number nine, adjournment.
Thank you so much. Uh, please note that Constance Berthallo is here as well. Thank you, Jimmy. Um, I did announce that you might be running just a bit behind because you were, um, in Annapolis, um, doing outstanding work out there as well. Um, so council, I need to ask you guys how we guys like to move forward. As you guys can tell, unless there's another agenda I don't see in front of me. Um, the agenda that reflects that we were coming back from recess from the budget is not here. The item is not even out for discussion. Which means that at this point, we cannot have a discussion on it unless one is added to the agenda. One, or because that meeting was not recessed, we basically have walked ourselves into one meeting. We will have to finish this meeting and then, um, close it and come back from recess, um, from the budget. So those are basically your alternatives at that point. I need to know what you guys would like to do. Jared, go ahead. Um, I see your mic open, Jared, but I'm not sure, um, if you wanna speak or not. So do you guys understood what I just said or no? Jared, go ahead.
Sorry, uh, can you guys hear me? I'm having some audio problems.
We could hear you now.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, can you, can you say that again? I apologize.
So if you guys recall correctly, after the, um, before we left, um, we walked into the closed session. We decided to recess the budget, um, work session of last, um, that we held on Saturday. And we're supposed to recess it, uh, right before this meeting. Uh, there is no agenda, no announcement or nothing made to the public. So at this point, we have just opened one meeting and we have another meeting on recess.
Okay.
So, um, so basically, basically, it's a couple of options we could do. One of them includes finishing this meeting right now and recess back into the other meeting. Or just move the meeting to the 11th because at this point, there's no agenda or anything, um, posted or committed to alert them that yes, we're gonna come back from recess from, um, that Saturday meeting.
Mayor, what do you recommend?
Yeah, that's my, that's my question.
I would recommend we need to put an agenda together and just have the meeting on 11th. So that will, we give enough notice to the community. And then also we get the documents that, um, we're still, we're waiting for, um, to be able to make decisions, uh, for the, for the meeting we recess on.
Is there anything that has this timely that we have to deal with today?
Hi, this is Luke.
I would say no, at least to me. Um, Luke, I'm not sure, uh, please note that Luke is here, uh, but Luke, I'm not sure how much of it you heard, but there is no agenda, um, or notice to the public that, uh, we are recessing back, um, from our meeting on Saturday today. So we have a, a meeting on recess and this open meeting currently right now.
We needed to do that? We needed to, when we recess a meeting, we have to go do?
Of course. Because we could say we're doing it on the 4th, but unless we give public, I know official notice to the public that's saying yes, we're coming back on the 4th, here's the time, here's the agenda, what's gonna be discussed. There, there is no, um, there's no notice to the public or documents in front of us, uh, to address whatever we needed to address today.
Okay, when, when's our next meeting on the budget?
The 11th.
Okay, and then we would, then we would just have it. So then we wouldn't have a first reading until May 2nd?
Then we will have to put the recess back on that day. Um, recess it back on that day and then continue the, the meeting. We could do a, well, yeah, we will have to move that one as well.
I'm not sure why we can't do it the 25th, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
I'm not sure why we can't do it the 25th. We haven't been in session from the 25th also.
Okay. I think it's in the budget calendar, Jimmy, is we had the April 11th as our first reading of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
That's the rea, that's the only reason why, but we also said notice that we're postponing that meeting on 11th. And we just recessed, we could always put notice out that we will be, uh, changing that information out. But it definitely, um, it might accidentally land, um, into a short of it. Melissa, can you double check, um, for me when it comes to the 11th? Is there a requirement for first reading for us to pub, that we publish something or what's just the hearing?
It was the airing, the hearing and the first reading. But we did put out notice that we're gonna recess the work session after the legislative session. So was there supposed to be a different agenda? Cause we have the same agenda from the Saturday after this agenda.
Oh, so if you scroll down, you'll see the agenda, the, the agenda for the recess?
Yes, and it was included in the package. And we did put out notice that it's gonna be after the legislative meeting.
Oh, well, then we're good.
Okay, next time, please make sure if we are, we are recessing for something goes in front of the other agenda, not after, it does not work that way, okay? Mainly because we're continuing one program to go into the other. And also when you send it out to us, make sure it's noticed because I got in notices from people saying that they only, they, the only thing that saw was the legislative meeting, not a continuation of the other one. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so what do you guys wanna do?
Let's move ahead.
Okay. All right, any, any changes on the agenda?
That's how we can change the agenda, put that one up in the front, right?
I guess the question is, is we, do we have a presenter for this item or not? Cause the next on the agenda is update and discussion on 3200. And if we don't have a presenter, then we don't have nothing on that. I mean, we could have a discussion, but there's nobody presenting to us.
Well, I would suggest we're not having a present, presentation. Then the question is, have anyone to discuss or do we wanna wait for the presentation? I don't think I have anything to add until we hear the discussion. I mean, you know, till we hear the presentation.
Okay, so, um, Ron.
So I would suggest that we table that to the next, to the next time when they can make a presentation. Unless, unless Mr. Hopkins has something you want to add.
Checking that you guys are aware that we're missing, right? Nobody's coming as far as you concerned?
That's to Ron, yeah.
So yes, um, so email was sent out to the city manager this morning, we're requesting an extension to the next two weeks. I don't know if the city manager responded or not.
Okay, thank you so much, Ron. Um, Kamali, Alma, whichever you guys is next.
Just wanna let you know that, uh, I did receive email and mayor and council were on the email. And I was not happy with his email, that's why I didn't answer. I asked Alma to send him and remind him again. Cause there is a mess on 3200 and the way all tired of this situation for past 18 months. That's why I didn't respond to him. So he's not in and we're gonna communicate with him later.
Okay, so I will definitely, um, request from Mayor, uh, for the rest of the team for us to table item number four, update and discussion 3400. Alma, anything else to add or we're, we're good?
No, we're good. Good evening, um, we're good, Mayor, cause I don't have any information.
Thank you so much and, um, thank you also, um, for responding. I guess to clear out why the response was sent, thank you. Okay, so if you guys could table item number four, please?
Yeah, sorry, can I ask a question of clarification?
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, so I, I understand there was, you know, some frustra, frustration at the, um, uh, the barriers, they, the, the paneling they put up came down and we're addressing that with them. But did they, so they were supposed to come tonight, did they elect not to show up? Is what happened?
No, in his email, he was saying that he's not ready because he's waiting to, to get the DPI, you know, permit, and that was his reason. I don't, I don't think that, you know.
The answer is yes, they elected not to show up.
Okay, no, that's, that's helpful. Um, I understand that we just got that today. So, you know, obviously I apologize for folks that showed up, uh, when the presenter elected, uh, to cancel last minute and we will, uh, reschedule and impress upon them, uh, and, you know, being, being present and, uh, providing an update on this project. Thanks.
So what would you guys like to do regarding number four? You guys would like to table it for next, next meeting?
Yeah, I moved the table.
For the future, go ahead, Valerie.
I moved the table to the next meeting.
All right, thank you, um, for the discussion. All right, so a, a number, item number has, has been tabled for the next meeting, uh, until we hear. Um, I know there's frustration happening, but we need to definitely communicate directly with the person. Um, that's something that needs to happen, okay? All right, so, um, moving on to item number, so any other change on the, on this part of the, on this agenda? Hearing none, um. Hearing none, I'm gonna move to, um, to approve the agenda. Tableling item number four.
Could I add just one comment, Mayor?
Guys, if you weren't, we're gonna continue talking about 3200, just leaving the agenda comments on it. Because at this point, um, it's been quite a bit of time. If it's something that's not addressed, uh, I just, uh, a message in the chat, we're 100% know that the things fell. We're in communication with him and they've been told they need to fix that, okay? Anything else that was not addressed, Luke?
Um, nope. That's fine, I'll, I'll respond on the chat.
All right, perfect. So, uh, Mario, we're definitely handling the situation, we're working on them, okay? We're working to address the situation. All right, um, so I, I will say we're in agreement to, uh, table number four and move on to the next item. Item number three, mayor, Constance Berthallo events announcements. Um, go ahead, uh, Luke, Jimmy, Jared, Valerie?
Yeah, there will be a, a cleanup event, um, on April 8th, this Saturday at the Food Forest, um, from 10:00 AM to noon. Um, so if you're able to join, um, we'd really appreciate your help, just taking out some weeds, um, making things look a little bit nicer, getting ready for the spring and everything that's about to pop up and bloom. So again, that's 10:00 AM to noon in the, in the Food Forest, we'll be doing a cleanup. Thank you.
Jimmy?
Uh, the Washington Bridge Unit is gonna be holding its, uh, 85th, 25th anniversary, 25 years since they moved to Mount Rainier and 85 years since they were in existence. Uh, as the, uh, Washington Bridge Unit was, uh, African-Americans weren't allowed to play in bridge associations. They set up the American Bridge Association and the local chapter was the Washington Bridge Unit. Has many members, including Thurgood Marshall, uh, many other important people. And their date is September 30th, so save the dates, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jimmy, and also for your, your work, um, being, being a member, keeping us informed with the great work that's been done there. All right, uh, Jared, Valerie?
Yep, uh, just a reminder to folks, the, um, mixed use town center committee, that's a committee that works in coordination with Park and Planning, um, to, uh, to work on, um, exterior facade and development to review and provide, um, consultation on, uh, sorry, um, exterior renovations and development in our downtown, historic downtown core. It's basically Rhode Island and, uh, 40th, uh, 30th, 34th Street. Um, the committee has, is, um, taking applications for a new tier term, has seven members on it. Um, and I just wanted to note that, uh, applications for this are still open. So if you're interested, you can go to the city's website, uh, and submit a, uh, letter of interest and a brief resume, uh, to indicate your interest in serving on, uh, the committee. So, uh, application was extended through April 11th, um, so if you're interested. Um, again, there's information when I'm on social media, email, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm the liaison on council to MUTC, Park and Planning, and, uh, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared. Um, okay, Valerie?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, just a couple of events, um, that are going on at Mount Rainier Elementary School, just as an FYI. Um, April 19th is their first, uh, walk and bike to school day for the spring. Um, I know they are also participating in May 3rd, the National Walk Bike and Road to School Day, but they're doing a, like a test one, April 19th. Um, and then, um, April 22nd is the growing green with pride for both Thomas Stone and for, um, and for Mount Rainier Elementary. That's it, thank you.
Thank you so much, um. So, um, can you scroll down to, um, the events, Melissa? So we have Arbor Day, April 28th, Election Day is May 1st at the Nature Center. Month of peace is May 1st, um, the Asian American month is May 1st. Walk Bike for Road to School, um, May 3rd. And Valerie already gave you guys that information. Community shredding event is May 6th at City Hall from 9:00 to 12:00, um, one box per household. The youth scholarship deadline is May 12th. Open studios in Kew, our district is May 13th. Bike to Workdays, May 19th, Mount Rainier Day, May 20th, Memorial Day is May 29th. And I also added on the chat, there is a meet and greet with, uh, Constance Fisher on April 21st at 9:30 AM. At 36, 3706 Otis Street on the rear side, um, here in Mount Rainier, there's an R S B P. Um, they would like for you guys to fill in any, any other questions regarding this event. Um, please reach out to, um, Ms. Valerie Tiber. Oh, I'm horrible, sorry. And I also saw Margaret, um, posted something as well on it, so. So make sure you reach out to Valerie, but you guys are invited to this meet and greet, um, on the 21st, okay? As for, now, that's my announcement. I'm still working on enjoying my vacations and hope not having too many meetings out here in the, on the motherland. All right, so, um, uh, number four has been tabled, and new number four is public comment. Can you please, uh, take me to page four, um, Melissa? Okay, there you go, the mayor, Constance Vice, and welcomes comments to the public meetings. The mayor or presiding officer will recognize you. Please introduce yourselves, spelling, well, you don't have to spell your last name, but first and last name, your block and street number. The comment time is limited of three minutes per speaker, otherwise, which is agreed by us. While speaking, please maintain a cordial tone and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge a complaint about performance and conduct of any city employee, please bring your consent to attention of the city manager who will look into the matter and respond to you. As the courtesy to a resident, the business that council requests that speakers use specific addresses or names of individuals when describing, uh, situation or making a complaint, noting the block prefer for a specific address. Code compliance to book the safety issue should be first brought to the attention of the appropriate departments or one of, um, I guess mayor or council. Okay, all right, so the part that is, um, also, okay. All right, so do we have any member of public that wishes to speak on the public comment section of the, uh, thank you for moving it, of the agenda? And if you're here, please type it on the chat. Name, last name, um, block and street number. And you'll be called upon. In the meantime, is there anybody on Facebook that wishes to make a comment? Thank you, Jared. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Item number six, closed session summary for March 21st, 2023, and March 25th. Vice Mayor Stoffes will read the closed sessions. The closed session summaries for 321 and 325. Go ahead, Jared.
Yep. Uh, can you, yep. Thank you, um, thank you, Melissa. A closed system summary sheet to be written in the record, uh, this is for March 21st, 2020. Guys, I'm sorry. Yeah, I hope so. Um, March 21st, 2023, 7:00 PM, um, closed under annotated code, John Provisions, Article 3 dash 305 B7 and B9. Uh, those who voted to go in a closed session, uh, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Stoltzus, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall. Unanimous of all elected officials in attendance, Mayor Selena Benitez, Council, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Stoltzus, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall. Uh, those in attendance, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Stoltzus, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall, City Council, Lucette LeVon, City Manager, Kurosh Kamali, Director of Finance, Ron Wilson. Actions taken to consult with council and obtain legal advice and to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters relate to that negotiations and topics discussed are the same. All right, thank you. And then the closed session summary for March 25th, 2023, uh, 3:41 PM, uh, virtual. Uh, we closed it under annotated code, John Provisions, Article 3 dash 305 B1 and B, sorry, I should say B7 and B9. Those who voted to go into closed session, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Stoltzus, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall. And unanimous of elected officials in attendance, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Stoltzus. Councilmember Jared Stoltz, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall. Those in attendance, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Stoltz, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall, City Council, Alyssa Levon, City, uh, sorry, City Manager Karosh Kamali, Director of Finance, Ron Wilson. Uh, actions taken to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance valuation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. To consult with council to obtain legal advice and to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to those negotiations and the topics discussed are the same. So, uh, that is it. Thank you so much, Melissa, for pulling that up, and I appreciate it.
Jared, uh, just one added, um, the three twenty-five was the last meeting we held, correct?
Yes.
Um, Chief, um, Austin was also part of the meeting. So can we make that addition to it, please?
I will amend that, yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, so you have heard our first summary of the closed sessions, um. Thank you, uh, we are up to date with all the closed sessions. Thank you for that, okay? Great work, Jared. Legit, red. Okay, all right, um, moving on to item number seven, introduction, first reading of ordinance, oh, four dash twenty-two thirty-three amending ordinance, ten twenty-two to defer the effective day, therefore, until January first, twenty twenty-four, declaring the council in ten, to be bound by the third Supreme Georgia's County C B O seven twenty-two-three through December thirty-first. Um, so the mayor council introduced and have the first reading of the ordinance, so, um, I know it says first reading and we'll just keep it, uh, like that as is, but, um, it could have easily been an emergency ordinance to make sure we, um, pass it today since April eleven, I believe it's the day when, um, when the counties, uh, goes into effect. All right, so can you move it up, uh, Melissa, oh, four, twenty-two-three? So in short summary, we know, you guys know we passed our rent stabilization, um, ordinance. And we are opting to defer ours until January twenty twenty-four to fall into the Prince George's County Council Emergency Rent Stabilization. And in doing so, we are gonna be sending notices out to the landlords to let them know. And, uh, different until January twenty twenty-four, ours at least, okay? Uh, keep moving. The warehouse are basically as the other warehouse, you know, there's, you know, there you go, there you go. Okay, I'll move it more. There. Now therefore be arraigned by the council in the city of Mount Rainier that the effective day of the ordinance ten twenty-two, as amended by ordinance ten eleven twenty-two. Is set forward in section two of the ordinance, number ten twenty-two, is amended to January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, unless a sooner day is provided by city council by the ordinance amending or repeating this ordinance, um, before obtained by the, um, by the council city of Mount Rainier that pursuant to the provision of the Maryland Code, annotated local government are section four dash one hundred eleven, the city expresses its intention that C B O seven dot twenty-three be affected within the boundaries of city of Mount Rainier until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Section three be further ordained that the city of, uh, the council city of Mount Rainier, that the ordinance is adopted by the council of the city of this day of April twenty-third and should take effect on day of April twenty-third, provided that the first summary has been read at the meeting of which is introduced and adopted, a copy should be posted at city hall for at least two weeks after it becomes effective and that a fair summary is published at least one published at least once in a newspaper having general circulation, the city included the city newsletter, mail, otherwise delivered in the city household. So this is what the draft looks like, I guess, we need to discuss the final part, um, and we could do that with our team. But it's basically, um, we will fall under the county ordinance, uh, when they become active. Um, and that's basically what it says in summary. So I'm gonna go to council if they wanna add anything, but at this point, it just says it's a read-through, we'll leave it as is, and, um, we could, um, work on the approval, uh, on the eleven if need, if need be. But, uh, the idea of passing it as an emergency today was to make sure that, um, that two weeks will pass, so that way, um, it will become, um, enacted at the same time that county did. All right, so, um, we're gonna go Valerie, Jared?
Um, yeah, thank you. I don't have anything to add at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie, Jared.
Nope, um, and just for clarity, I must, I'm assuming we covered this, but just for folks getting on just now, this is, uh, the county passed a rent stabilization measure that's, uh, temporary after the council, city council passed ours, so ours is aligning, um, um, aligning, just basically putting ours on hold until and, uh, letting the county one go into effect and then, um, going to effect in the future. Sorry, Selena, did I get that right? Apologies.
Yeah, basically, you summarized my summary.
Yeah, just, just wanted to say, just wanted to explain why we're, it's, it's a
A hundred percent. It does not mean ours is, um, is like, is ending, it just means we're putting a pause and we'll let the county, we'll let the county fall because the cities have jurisdiction, maybe that's a step that we're missing. The city has jurisdiction to be able to make, um, laws that include rent stabilization for their territory. We have opted to do that, just like other cities have. Seeing that the county currently has an emergency one that's gonna be coming to effect in the next few weeks, right? The council has opted to fall into their emergency in order to give some time to the landlords and also work on administrative end. It makes our going effect, um, in the beginning of January as listed on it. It will be, once this is approved, we'll be sending notices out to the landlords to let them know where the decision is, so that way they have a clear vision that they will follow like, um, the Prince George's County Council, um, emergency rent stabilization law until, um, January twenty-four. Good? Jared?
Yep.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Luke?
Sorry, there's a little noise in the background. Um, yeah, no, I'm good with this. Um, I think it makes sense, um, for a city our size to be able to implement something as big as a rent stabilization program, it's just gonna take us time to get our ducks in a row, make sure staff's able to do things um, and really plan it out well. Um, so I think this is well thought out to, to sort of delay until next year. Thank you.
Okay, Luke, sorry, Luke, Jimmy?
Nothing to add.
Thank you so much. So, um, here's the, here's the first reading, all right? And, um, we could always, um, put into emergency on the eleven to do a second reading and approval, that's what I'm gonna move forward to, uh, um, that's something I'm gonna ask for, so that way we move through to fall, um, into it as soon as possible, because if not, we're gonna miss the gray area. Unless somebody wants to, um, so that's where we're at with this one, okay? All right, so moving on to the next one, vote and approval of minutes. Um, we have the minutes in the package for February twenty-first, twenty-two-three, special legislation meeting, work session, public hearings. February twenty-eight, twenty-two-three, special legislative meeting and budget work session and March seven, twenty-two-three legislative meeting, um. Can I have a motion to approve this minutes? Have been submitted to you in previous meetings. Um, and were asked for us to make any adjustments last week uh, to our city clerk and, um, Melissa, anybody's made any edits or they still stay the same?
It's still the same.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve, um, the three sets of minutes?
So moved, second?
Okay, it probably moved in second. Any discussion? Objections, abstentions, hearing none. Uh, the minutes for February twenty-first, twenty-eight and March seven have all been approved. Uh, Melissa, thank you. Gabby also, thank you, um. And we are up to date with all of our minutes, correct, Melissa?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, perfect. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
To move?
Second.
That was so slow, guys. Okay, it's probably moved, I know, I'm afraid to enjoy the rest of my vacations. Um, it's probably moved in second. Any discussion, objections, abstentions? Hearing none, um, we will fall under the next meeting. Thank you guys so much. Okay, move. All right, so to give you guys a bit of a feedback, on Saturday, March twenty-four, we had a public hearing that went on for the whole, basically the whole entire day from ten o'clock from the hearing, ten thirty, you know, followed by the work session from the budget, it went on, I think, to five PM, if I don't miss second, at that point, it was just too many hours for us to continue. Um, so we decided to recess it and bring it up to this meeting. That's what you also noticed, the legislative meeting was very short. Thank you, council, for sticking to our agreements of not adding extra stuff to that meeting, so that way we could be, um, on a roll with this. So, um, I would like to have a motion to recess back from the, can you move it up, Melissa? Move it up or down? So I see this big on. Can we have a motion on the floor to recess back from the FY twenty-four budget work session?
Do you mean to end the recess?
Yeah, to end the recess.
So moved.
Okay.
It's been probably moved in second, any discussion? Objections, abstentions? Hearing none, we are back, um, from our public hearing, um, sorry, we're back for more, uh, FY twenty-four budget work session. I'm, I'm trying to get on my language correctly, because I've been working very hard on my Spanish over here. Okay, so. Melissa, if you stop moving it, it'll make my life a lot easier. Thank you. So we don't, um, I will do that call in order just for the record, Melissa. All right, uh, Valerie Woodall?
I'm here.
Ja- uh, Jared Stofus?
I'm here.
Luke Chesek?
Here.
Jimmy Tarlo?
Here.
And myself, so everybody is here. The agenda will not move, we're just gonna go to the, we're just gonna finalize where we, where we end the proposal of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, Melissa, can you move us to the screen to where we end up on that Saturday, please? So while you do that, um, all of the directors from the various departments, um, came. We did a full read-through of most of the budget. We're down to the last bit of par and we did have Q and A questions, um, for the directors. I will say, I'm still waiting on some paper that we requested in order to have this meeting be a little more successful, so I am gonna ask the city manager, please submit all the paper that was requested, um. No later than, uh, I would say Thursday for us to review it, because the next big meeting is April eleven. And council needs to go through all of it to figure out what they wanna do and what edits, um, they need to make to this budget. Okay, or suggestions for that matter. All right, so.
Well, Mayor, Mayor, what were those, what were those papers?
I don't understand that, you know, it was only
Hold on, it's only one mic, and I will, I will answer your question at this point. All right, so we're gonna fall right now under other budget discussion. The items that were requested were that HR training information, so we knew what the training was, the cost and who was involved. The other item that was requested was all of the items from the committees, because we were not, we did not receive any information. And nothing was, that just, it was just thrown into the budget. We did ask for the information to be submitted. Council members, was there anything else that was asked that you guys needed to see? Documents that were not submitted to you guys prior to the meeting that we did ask that for the future, those items be given to us ahead of time, so we know what to do with some of that information.
I didn't have any, I, I thought it, I thought it was pretty well prepared, but we always miss some things, so I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Jimmy. Um, Jared, Valerie, Luke?
I have nothing additional.
Nothing additional.
Not at this time, no.
Um, you guys, um, even if you have nothing at this point, you guys go with it in email after the meeting, okay? If there's something you guys remember, you guys need to see, all right? So that should answer the question of what documents needs to be sent, uh, to council, um, as far as the budget, uh, documents, and if I could think of something else, I'll send it out as well, okay? All right, so back to the summary, we end up on item number other budget discussion. So mayor council, we discussed other budget items for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And as I mentioned before, this came after, um, having a discussion with the various, uh, directors, I remember two items. One of the items was call citations form, there was, the information was gonna be sent to us because it was supposed to be updated, because there was some inconsistencies. Um, and also when it came to the police, uh, department as well, when it came to citations, I think it was, and Chief Alma might be here to, uh, let us know which one it was, but those were the two, um, additional ones that we were asked to, um, to send to us to figure out what the numbers were. And, um, third one was the, how the rent stabilization information on the budget was determined per unit. I did request for the, for that information to be sent to us to make sure we have our numbers. Um, so we know where those numbers came on the budget, as it does not apply to all of the apartment units, um, in the city to make sure we don't have, um, unimbalance in, in the budget in the line item. So that was the other item that was requested as well. And I also, that one also follow up with an email. All right. So, um, what we have right here in front of us is the debt service constituency reserves, okay? Um, let me see. Ron Wilson, can you go ahead and read this line items, please?
Yes, ma'am. Um, for the, um, other services and charges, uh, item fifty-five ninety-eight contingency, we have budgeted fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. For debt services, we have four line items, fifty-eight ten, which is, uh, interest on the bond, bond funeral home. That's budgeted for twenty-three hundred and sixty dollars. Fifty-eight fifteen principal on the bond for the funeral home, eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is an existing bond and it will mature during fiscal twenty-four. Uh, next is line fifty-eight thirty, principal on the Potts Hall bond for a hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and four dollars. And then line fifty-eight thirty-five, interest on the Potts Hall bond, sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Potts Hall bond is the new bond that was taken out in fiscal twenty-three uh, for two million dollars for the Potts Hall redevelopment. Uh, we made one bond payment in February. Um, and we will have, uh, two semi-annual payments in fiscal twenty-four. So the total operating expenses for this department is three hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
Okay, thank you. Uh, ta-da, and thank you for also explaining the bond, um, information through, so, um, okay, council, um, since it's a very short portion of it, I'm gonna go ahead and see the floor to you guys, okay? We'll go around, Jared, see your mic open, we're gonna go work to Jared, Valerie, Luke, Jimmy, go ahead.
Yep, thank you for the, uh, clarity and background, Ron, it's much appreciated. Um, just real quick, can you remind me when the, um, the, uh, debt service on the funeral home ends, it's soon, right?
Uh, ye- yes, um, it, it will be roughly the first half of fiscal twenty-four.
Okay, so that'll just for, again, for folks watching, that'll drop off in future years.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Valerie?
Yep, thank you. Um, Ron, can you just walk through the contingency line item? It's going down by seventy-nine percent, I know. Um, I understand it, but it's for the public, in case people are wondering, um, why it's going down and why there wasn't anything in FY twenty-two or FY twenty-one.
Um, it, it was a, a matter of balancing out the other requirements in the budget. Um, we just didn't have enough left over to have the same contingency that we did for fiscal twenty-three. In past years, we, we've tried to budget roughly fifty thousand dollars for a contingency. Uh, we just had, um, Uh, we just had um the good fortune of being able to budget a significantly higher one for fiscal twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Luke, Jimmy?
Yeah, I I just I just wanna remind people that we have a contingency, and we also have a reserve. So if we ever like are really serious in, you know, problems, we can always take money out of the reserves and put it into the contingency. The reserves are like uh something like three million dollars, investment reserves. So it's not like that's the only money the city has in the bank. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh Jimmy, Luke?
No, yeah, I think it was um, you know, we wanted that high number in contingency last year, because there was a lot of costs we thought might be coming down the pike. Um, I know, Mayor, you really wanted that number to be be pretty high, because of, you know, the Potts Hall stuff that we were looking to do and and other items. Um, so it's more at a normal level this year at the fifty-six thousand. Um, and in years past, we've, we've always, we always end up dipping into that somewhat. Something happens, an air conditioner somewhere blows, um uh plumbing gets messed up. Something happens at one of our facilities that you sort of need to dip into that for. Um, so it's helpful to have a little bit there. Um, excited to see that funeral home bond coming off the the books at FY twenty-five. That'll give us some flexibility going into next fiscal year's budget discussions. Um, so I think that's really good news. Um, and it means that the Potts Hall bond we took out is very reasonable, very manageable. Um, and so I think that sets up, sets us up well for future years, so appreciate all the work everyone did to get that financing in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Can I ask, I guess I'm gonna follow up on uh Councilmember Woodall uh question. Why is there no actual numbers for FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three?
Uh, I'm sorry, I I didn't catch that.
The question was, why don't we have any actuals for FY twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three for the contingency? Because that would be zero.
Yeah, we don't, we don't charge expenses to that line. If we need the money from the contingency, what we do is we rebudget and take it off the contingency and put it to another expense line where it's needed.
So I guess what we're asking is to make sure we, because I think one of the budget versions had what the, what was budgeted for FY twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, if we call, so make sure we have a way to um inform people of what that was, because it definitely wasn't zero. So it didn't went from zero to two hundred and sixty-two thousand.
No, 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 it was, it it's always been budgeted. Um, it's just that the budget format that that we have used now for several years is we only report the previous year's budget and the next year's budget. And then uh three years of actual activity, and this line does not have expenses charged to it.
So I would say if you could put us um on one of the bottom information of what was budgeted for the next last three years, it definitely will help. So that was given into perspective to people on what it looked like. So when we say it's more in tune what it used to be, I think one year was like thirty-five, if I'm not mistaken, right? But it's more in tune, that's the reason why, to see it there, so that way we're able to talk about it in context of what it looks like. Um. Okay, so um please make sure that's added, because like, I mean, it looks like we went from zero to two hundred and sixty-two to now fifty-six. So um it it might make sense to um in the finance, in the finance end, but to the community, like, it's better for us to keep record what it looks like. That's the reason why we originally started. Um, because it wasn't usually a five-year plan, it was like a one or maybe two or something like that, I know, Luke. If you remember correctly, I think it was maybe one or two years that we're on it, and we decided to do five. And I definitely will say for next year, it has to be five in front, if not a minimum three in front. So that we're able to make decisions not in a bubble, but moving forward. Most of the budgets um from some of the other cities, even including Maryland, have a five, a three-year projected budget in front, so that way in a case like where we take a vehicle that we're gonna be paying for the next three years, that is factored in our equation, so that we know what it looks like for one decision that's being made and what we're looking forward to doing. And um so please um definitely work on that for next year. I definitely appreciate it, so that way we have a better reading of what we're doing future and 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 past, okay? And uh thank you for putting all the information for the bond, and that way people understand where we're at and where we're going, and why is it that the bond bill for uh Potts Hall was taken for the amount it was taken now, taking into account that some of this was gonna be full off, but I I love to budget conservatively if I can, and basically if we took a two million dollar loan, I need to find ways in this or next year's budgets, right? To bring back those two million back into our reserves, um even if we have to cut a little bit around the budget to make sure that money goes back. Okay? So I want you guys to also be aware that that's where I'm at with certain things. Alright, so council, I don't see no questions on this one so far. Um, it was just a read-through. Ron, is there anything else that needs to be read through when it comes to this portion of the budget?
No, there's no more, there's no more uh that's needed for the read-through.
Okay, and for those that haven't seen the debts, um the budget um itself, you can find it online. Um, the budget does include um the the fees um that the city charges and the various things when it comes to the various departments. It is there. I guess we're gonna have a discussion on that at the first reading. I know there was um a consideration proposal that was put forward by um by one of our directors, so that's something we definitely need to talk about. And I'm getting a message here that says um the expenses side, is that what you're telling me that's missing? Can you go to the next page? Oh, our general fund expenses, this is the one that you already read, right? Or was it a different one, Ron? You're muted. Ron, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Th- this is just a total of all the individual departments. Uh, if you want, uh, you know, I can read the category totals. Would that be sufficient?
Yeah, go ahead, because we went one by one, so just go ahead and read them.
Alright, uh I'm gonna read off of my paper. Give me one second. Okay, uh these are the general fund expenses. These are the total from all of the individual departments that we previously read through. Um, for wages and leave pay, the uh total uh category budget uh as proposed is three million three hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. The category of employee benefits and services, the budget total is one million seven eighty-two, three sixty-one, and sixty-four cents. For materials and supplies, the category total is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. For repairs and maintenance, the category total is one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. For professional services, the category total is eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. For other services and charges, the category total is four hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. For community activities, the category total is one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. For infrastructure and facilities maintenance, the category total is eight hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. For capital outlay, the category total is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. For uh debt service and other, uh the category total is three hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. So the total operating expenses uh in this budget are eight million six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-two point twenty-three. And then grant expenses uh total four million nine hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. So the total expense budget is thirteen million five hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents.
Hey, thank you so much, and uh thank you for the reminder, Melissa. I did say to remind me. I appreciate you uh making sure I remind myself. Um, alright, so a- anything else we're missing? Melissa, we're good? Yes, ma'am. Alright, thank you so much. Um, so can you move it up just a little bit, and I'm gonna go through you guys to see if you guys have any questions regarding this portion? This is basically um the 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 general fund expenses is basically the bulk of every single line item. We just literally went one by one, the total amounts on one end. And if you see, um, there are some um increases, but the reality is like the you know, costs continue to increase. That's something that we need to face um with. Um, and the team has done a pretty good job of making sure they um they they try to balance it, to have a active um city keep going up a little bit more, Melissa. And at the same time, make sure that we split the budget um among the various uh programs. Let me see, keep going. The next one. Okay, right, yeah. Okay, council, you go right there. I need to look at something quickly. Alright, council, I'm gonna start uh backwards. We're gonna do Jimmy, Luke, um Valerie, Jared, go ahead.
I don't think Jimmy is here.
Uh, Luke, you're next. Thank you, Valerie.
If, could you scroll up to the top of this?
I was actually reading about a page.
Oh, sorry, you can, you can go, go, you can go back down, go back down, go back down.
No, no, it's fine. Which, which is the section you need to.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure we were still, I was just lost track of where we were. I'm fine.
General expenses, so basically this is a big run-through bulk of everything we just read through.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I I have, I have, I have no questions or comments. We've we've, we've already gone through each one of these line by line in their departments. Um, so the community knows we've already sort of gone through this. Thanks.
Thank you so much. This also gives it, gives the community a point of view of where our percentages are at. Like, if you see community activities, it shows uh twenty percent of the whole entire budget and so on, right? But I'm trying to see if there's one here that, I think last year. Oh, yeah, I see it here. Thank you guys so much. Okay, um. Sorry, Valerie, Jared?
Um, yeah, no, I think, um, I mean, we had a lengthy bu- budget hearing um last week, um, and so I, all this is just a compilation of that, so I thank you all for for working through that, and I know we're gonna have further discussion as we go, so thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Uh Jared?
Yep, now echo um Valerie and Luke's uh comments, and just also for anyone watching, again, you can go back uh and watch the um budget hearing. It's been recorded uh if you wanna hear the discussion and the detailed um uh dive into these items. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Uh Melissa, can you highlight the compost program? Okay, uh I do have a question about that one. I wanted to know why it went down to zero. Um, are we planning on fulfilling everything this year, or do we think that it's gonna um it's not gonna happen until next year? What is that looking like? Can I get some uh feedback from, from the team?
Yeah.
Molly?
It's uh, we're still waiting for him. Unfortunately, he's not responding and uh waiting, and I think Councilmember Jared was trying to reach out to him and see if he's planning to use that sixty-five hundred for this year and um take it from there.
Okay, thank you so much. Can we put um internally a little uh flag right there, in case that needs to be changed, in case it's not used this year? Okay? And it has to be moved for next year, so that we we take that into account. I know that that June thirty is um all of our counts, more or less. You know, they, they're, except for the payments that we need to pay, right? But we, on July first, we start using that new budget. If need be, how do you call it, we always make an amendment to the budget to include it. Or take it from the contingency, one or, one or the other. I just wanna make sure we put a flag there in case, because I know there's something that we wanna do. And if it's not completed before June thirty, we might have to um make some room for next year, if that's what the council decides, but I wanna make sure we we do not leave that out of the way. So Melissa, can you add it to the rolling agenda? Uh, that may be a good place to land on it, so we don't lose track of it. Thank you. Jared, I see your hand now. Go ahead.
Yep, yeah, I just wanted to follow up with Mr. Kamali said. I I um ran into Tim at a event this past weekend and reminded him that we need to, he needs to r- respond to the city manager and staff uh as soon as, as soon as possible, and then like status and update. So he's been uh advised on um, on uh um getting back to staff expeditiously, so uh we should have some clarity on that very soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared, uh for leading those efforts. Uh, the other thing is like the election um cost for next year, we don't have an election. So that's the reason why it went down to um to zero. That's something that I was asked, and um making more, more than, more than one person, but I let them know is because our elections are scheduled for this May, and is um every two years, so there's no schedule um assigned for next year. That's the reason why the money went down to um to zero in that line item for next year. Co- correct, Melissa? FY twenty-five is the next round? Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Okay? Alright, so um okay, so this has been basically a complete um read-through of of the budget at this point. We will have to um on the first official reading, discuss our um the the fees and look into what uh we would like to do with the recommendation that was put forward from our director of code. Okay? So that's something we need to look at, because when we do approve the budget, the fees are part of it. Um, so that needs, that also needs to be accomplished. And for some of you guys that are not aware, um maybe two years ago, or three, maybe three or four, um, we decided to take a lot of the uh fees off that were doubling up with the county. I think we left maybe the fence one, I think might be one of the few ones. Um, but they're there when it comes to like parking meters and everything else that you could think of as part of our budget, so yearly we approve it um a- as part of our um our budget process. So we're gonna have to like review that information on the next meeting and figure out what we would like to do. So I definitely would like for us to schedule um a co-director on our next meeting, so that way um she could present and we could make a decision on that. So ideally, um, that that could be done uh before um you know, right before the meeting on the eleven. So that way we could like come to a conclusion, if possible, and if not, like after the the re- the first official reading. Okay? So for the first reading, basically, we're gonna um discuss the changes that we'll make from this full run-through. And that's what we're gonna highlight on it, letting uh people know what changes were made from what's has been presented. So that way they're aware, we would not be reading line item by line item, because we already did that. But on the eleven, we'll be reading like what has been changed. Um, and you know, obviously, things have been changed. The general expenditure will be read through as well, sho- showing that overall changes in the department changes. But it's gonna be more like um not a line item by line item, but more of like what has been changed and what the overall run-through is, okay? So just as a point of information for everybody else. Uh, go ahead, Melissa. Um, okay, so council. So you could put it all the way to the bottom. Actually, go to the agenda, Melissa. I think we have covered it all. My apologies. On the agenda for the budget. You know, when it says two-thirty, um, two-thirty, what we're supposed to be doing? Like that, you know, like director, this time, this, there you go, the schedule. Thank you. There you go. Okay? So picking back up to other budget discussions, so you guys heard the budget, what was presented to us, uh information we're still awaiting, and other proposals. Um, we have, as Mayor and Council, there's other things that um we could ask to be added, adjusted, amended. We are waiting on certain things to be finalized as well, in order for us to be able to um to vote on it. Um, most of them were already included, but there's a couple of those, we're still working on them, okay? Um, and that also includes um part, part of the, you know, the negotiations that we're working on right now. Alright, so council, I need to hear. Council, I need to hear from you guys. Where you guys are at, um, is there anything you would like, that you see in the budget currently? We'll start one at a time. Is there anything that you currently see in the budget that has not been accounted for that you need to add? One and step number one. And I don't see Jimmy here neither. All right. Nothing that jump on, so Luke, I'm gonna go to you for some of the items that were discussed to potentially be added when it comes to first events and then we'll go to the other.
I'm here, mayor.
Oh, hi Jimmy. It's cause I don't see your smiling face, Jimmy. That's what it is and I understand, trust me. All right. Okay, there you go. Hi Jimmy. Yeah, cause if, if the camera's not on, you fall to the, to the bottom of the, of my deck. Um, okay, so, uh, Jimmy, you had anything to add that you don't see us in a line it, in, in line item there to be considered?
I, I do have things there, but I'd like to refer to others first and see what else people have and then I can add in.
So so far, I, I think that they're good. So I'm gonna ask, uh, Luke, if there's any activities or events such as that. Uh, Luke, can you, um, can you do that first part first to figure out like if there's at least some consensus on that? Go ahead.
Um, mayor, I can read through some of the items we discussed at the budget hearing, um, for changes. Um, and that would be on both the revenue side and the expense side, um, as well as where we could take items and put them into ARPA. If, if it would be helpful to run through all of those and then if something's not covered, somebody can add in.
So can you do me a first favor? Um, items that we're discussing to put into ARPA, can you do those right now together? So that way we don't have people leaving that. I know there were various requests that we're moving towards ARPA, right? So I wanna make sure that it's noted that that's where we're moving them to. So that way we get that clear out of the way and, you know, we don't cause any confusion, then we move to the other ones, okay?
Okay, so I can start with ARPA. Um, as far of, as far as the items that we were talked about moving from the budget to ARPA. Um, so for the public, we have some money left from ARPA. Um, we have about seven hundred thousand left that we have not allocated, that we need to allocate sooner rather than later. Um, and there are some items in the budget that are more or less one-time expenses. So they're not things that we need to worry about budgeting in future fiscal years. Um, they're just more one-time expenses. And so in order to not put a hit on our budget, um, we were discussing moving those to ARPA. Um, and so the few items that were in the budget that we talked about moving to ARPA were the computer equipment for MRPD. Um, it's sort of a one-time purchase, um, that we need to make because there was a one-time purchase made in years back about the equipment, the computer equipment that's in their cars. And it's, a lot of it's outdated, a lot of it doesn't work with current software that we need our force to be able to, um, interact with. Um, so that cost is fifty-five thousand dollars and we would move that from MRPD's budget to ARPA and get them the computers they need. The other item was uniforms. There was six, thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars for uniforms. Um, and we would move that into, um, ARPA expenditure, um, that thirty-six thousand. There was also a bike co-op expense of eight thousand dollars, um, that we were gonna move from the budget to ARPA. Um, and then there were two different, um, proposals, um, that we heard from. Um, uh, one was the throne bathroom that I think Jimmy had targeted for thirty-five thousand dollars, um, that we could put into ARPA. And then the second was, um, the gateway CDC. Um, there was talk of giving them, I think it was sixty thousand dollars annually for three years, which would be, um, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, and instead of putting that in the budget and have the gateway CDC sort of expect that they would get money budgeted every year, we thought it would be better to just give them a one-time lump sum of a hundred and fifty thousand, which is not the hundred and eighty. But it's a big sum at, in just one time off of ARPA. Um, so those are the expenses from, um, ARPA that we were looking to do.
Thank you so much, Luke. Um, is there anything else you guys recall that you need to add on that side? So to, to clarify, uh, to bring people up to speed, the throne, it'll be an ADA compliance throne. Uh, that's what we were waiting for and they have it. And Luke, can you clarify what uniform line item you were talking about? For what department?
Uh, the throne and the gateway CDC were not in the budget already. Those were, those were proposals by Jimmy and, and, um, Valerie respectively.
I, I was saying the uniforms from.
Oh, the u- u- uniforms are from MRPD's budget. Um, I'm not sure what the line item number was.
That's fine, cause you say uniforms and we have code uniforms, we have public works uniforms. I just wanted to make sure people didn't think it was all the uniforms. It was specifically, um, PD uniforms. Okay, um, a- anything else, um, ARPA related that we can think of at this point? And if not, that's fine. We, I just wanted to make sure people knew that we were gonna be addressing those items on, on ARPA. Okay? All right, thank you Luke for that. All right, so, um. Jimmy, is there anything else you need to add at this point from any of them?
No, not at this point. Uh, uh, at some point before the session ends, I do wanna talk about, uh, now that we've gotten the, uh, grant, uh, looks like we're gonna get seven fifty thousand dollars in the, I talked to, uh, Mr. Kamali about this. Uh, in the, in the governor's budget, uh, and there's possibly getting, uh, instead of having two stages of the hot stall, actually making a three stages and, and kind of nailing down a second stage now, so we don't have to pay higher rates later. So we would have a, a second stage and then we would just be able to have like a, a, a smaller deficit of maybe only a million dollars for a third stage. That way we could, you know, kind of nail down a contract at lower rates now. But we can talk about that a little bit later. I just wanna put that on people's, you know, something I'm interested in.
Thank you, Jimmy. Well, we'll make, uh, well Luke is our official like budget note taker slash support from the council for life. Um, you make a note of that, Luke?
Yep.
All right, perfect. Um, I do want to, there's something I'm, I'm working on right now. And it's not gonna be opera, it's gonna be budget. You guys could decide whichever one you want. But it's a recognition to our teachers, so having, um, the, the students and the parents vote for, uh, to recognize one teacher monthly from our, um, elementary and feeder schools. So that way we do acknowledge them, um. We definitely, we have great teachers and the fact that they wanna teach in our communities is outstanding, especially with the big shows that we have currently. So I'm gonna be putting that proposal together, but at this point is, um, fifteen thousand, pretty conservative, right? And it's basically, um, you know, a certificate and a small, um, a small, you know, a stipend as a recognition for, for the work. So once a month, we'll like honor, uh, one of the teachers, um, working for our students. Okay? So that's something, um, definitely I'm asking to add a thousand five hundred. All right. Okay, um, so that's that one. I lost you, Luke. Um, so, there you go. All right, so. The, there is a part we're finalizing because, you know, you guys have heard this over and over, which is the negotiations. We're working on that right now and hoping to have the last dot dotted. I and cross T coming up very soon, so that should be able to, um, resolve some of the things that we have unresolved, right? Um, and then, um, we, we're moving to the next section of, of our proposals. Go ahead, Luke.
Okay, would you like me to talk about the, the, the changes in the budget itself on the revenue and expense side?
Yeah, can you start, um, because you, we, we removed a lot of the stuff, so now where we're thinking of adding and idea of also saving, um.
Yep.
Okay, go on.
So on the revenue side of the house, there was, um, discussion of doing a, um, a one cent reduction, um, in the single-family home, um, the single-family and townhome property tax rate. Um, so right now it's at seventy-six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. And we would bring it down to seventy-five cents of, per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Um, and that would decrease revenue by forty-one thousand three hundred dollars. And the second item on the revenue side would be, earlier tonight, you saw our proposal on delaying implementation of the rent stabilization, uh, ordinance until twenty twenty-four. That would decrease revenue from rent stabilization fees that we were expecting to enact by sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. Um, so we would be decreasing revenue by one hundred nine thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. And that's on the revenue side, so you would, that money would go down. So the mayor and council then looked at the expense side to see how we could meet that revenue loss. Um, and so there were a few items there. Um, as Selena mentioned, the FOP, um, is, is being finalized with a CBA where the FOP members will be getting a raise. Um, so they, they don't need to be getting the COLA in this budget because they're getting a raise through the FOP negotiations. Um, so, so taking, ref- reflecting that accurately in the budget would be a reduction on the expense side on those salaries of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and one. Understanding that their salaries are going up, it's just sort of a budget fix based on those negotiations. Um, the arts commission, we would reduce by four thousand dollars to bring it down from nineteen thousand to fifteen thousand. Um, there was a proposal, um, by Jimmy to bring down, um, our, our, our fees, our, our, the cost of associations, subscriptions, conferences, temporary labor and training, um, out of that all, that big bucket for the city manager to determine where to reduce that by ten thousand dollars, um, which is not a big hit to all those areas. So he's gonna have to figure out where to take that from. Um, there was also a proposal to, um, reduce funding for the mayor and council retreat, so that would be minus three thousand dollars. Um, there was a proposal to, um, and the mayor was sort of speaking to this during the budget hearing. Um, we do a Juneteenth celebration and the mayor wanted to call out in the budget that, yes, we have a Juneteenth celebration so that it's not just something that's a part of other activities that we do as a city, but it's called out specifically in the budget, so people are aware of that. And so that would be an addition on the expense side of one thousand dollars. Um, and then there was a proposal to do a reduction of city-sponsored meetings of three thousand dollars. Um, then there was also, um, in talking with MRPD and the city manager at the budget hearing, that we could reduce the car maintenance expense in MRPD by five thousand dollars. Um, there was also the need that Jimmy mentioned for the police advisory board for their expenses to go up by three thousand dollars. Um, and there was also discussion with Public Works that we could reduce the streetlights and signals expense by five thousand dollars. So totaling up the expenses that we moved to ARPA with the expenses that I just went through, we would be reducing the budget by one hundred and twenty, well, by about one hundred. Sorry, I'm getting my numbers mixed up here, um, cause I have other, we, we're reducing the budget by almost that same amount that we would be, um, sorry, by more than, let me do the math here, a hundred and about a hundred and fifty or so thousand dollars. Um, that's what the reductions would be. Um, and so there would be, we, we would be reducing expenses more than we would be, um, reducing revenue. So there would be money for us to do more stuff with. And so that's where a discussion is needed on how much of a COLA we wanna give to staff that is, um, not in the, not covered by the FOP. Um, and Selena, I'll pause there in, until you wanna get into that conversation.
So, uh, one thing, Luke, um, rent stabilization board, um, I didn't hear, we have to budget some funding for it. Right? Although they're gonna be functioning half a year. Um, I need to make sure that they have what, whatever, you know, what they need to be able to function as well. And it's an advisory board, um, um, as well. It's like, uh, the police advisory boards, I wanna make sure we account into them. I think that most of the boards, they, they more or less have about the same money, um, cautious for us to go too high. Um, and that's the reason why I wanted to make sure we looked at what the information looked like and what the plans were, um, for the committees and for us to make the right decisions on where to move, because we have been increasing our committees. Um, and so therefore we need to make sure we balance it out a little bit as well. So you can make, can you make sure also you add that?
Sure. How much do you want to put in there? One thousand or?
Let's do one thousand for right now because only half a year, if we need to adjust it down, then we will. But I think a thousand will be fine because they're gonna be kicking off. The other thing is like, I need to make sure that, that thousand dollars will serve for us, for them to sign notices to the meetings and everything else they're gonna have, um, they're gonna, they're gonna be doing, it's gonna be a little bit of, um, it's gonna be, yeah. So I'll put a thousand for right now, um, and I'm fine with that. We could, we could just leave it like that. The other thing I do wanna point out that I just looked at was, we do have some retreat money for this year. Three thousand that we did not use. So that might give us a chance to be able to reduce some of the money, uh, from next year. Okay? So, um, that way after May, how do you call it, um, you know, the May-June, we might be able to utilize some of the money. Okay?
I see, maybe hold, maybe hold, yeah, hold the retreat in June and that way we don't have to dip into FY twenty-four, I see.
Yeah, and so put a, put a little star, whatever you wanna put on it, because I was like, now seeing the budget, I was like, okay, we have money right there that we have not used. And if we are able to, um, at least, um, you know, hi- hire, you know, hire what we need, even if we, if, if we're hired to, if we pay whatever we need to pay before, we should be fine. All right, so just put a note on that as well. So that might give us a little, a little bit of flexibility. Um, okay, so I definitely wanted to, um, there, so that will, will increase ideally the reductions are, are in. Okay, so. I'm gonna go to council to figure out if you guys have any questions, anything that was missing there, so we do it in pauses. So that way we don't have like a whole, um, free-for-all and then I do see a question in the, in the community end. All right, so Jimmy, Valerie, Jared, go ahead.
No, I am happy to, uh, I don't know, always tentatively accept some of these proposals and bring it back to the city manager and the finance director to kind of basically see what kinds of changes that would affect, so we can have a good discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Jimmy. Valerie?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, just a couple of things. Um, Luke, thank you for putting all of that, um, into ARPA and discussing, um, and working through all this. Um, I did wanna note that you did, um, have a line item for the home repair program, um, proposal that I'm putting in there, um, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well in the ARPA funds. Um, and so that's forthcoming as well, um, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that that was noted as well. But, um, other than that, I think this is, this is a good, uh, first cut, um, second, third cut. Um, and I think, um, I think we're moving in the right direction, so thank you.
Okay, perfect. Uh, Jared?
Yeah, just wanted to thank Luke's, thank you for that thorough summary and, you know, finding a way to reduce, um, rates and reduce spending in certain areas, um, you know, we have this, uh, ARPA funding. Um, there is, uh, again, that was allocated by Congress. It does have an expiration date. So we are absolute, sorry, there's a lot of background noise. Um, thank you. Um, that really, that is, uh, so we're allocating, uh, ARPA funding, which we need to spend, uh, and we've been asked by congressional representatives to make sure we expend it, uh, within the deadline, uh, like others, like not only us, but other cities. Um, and this is the right, absolutely the right approach for, uh, costs that are time limited, uh, like the, um, time limited support for Gateway. Um, and, uh, potentially extend, potentially extending the throne, the, that's the, again, the restroom, uh, smart bathroom that we had uh, piloted, um, in downtown and that we wanna continue. So, um, I, yeah, I really appreciate the proposals, um, tightening and, uh, scaling back where appropriate and, uh, budgeting work, uh, budgeting work here. So thank you.
Um, the other thing I wanted to make sure we put a note, Luke, on it was, I believe we had three years worth of scholarships that we had put on the ARPA. And then I had asked for it to, um, be ongoing until two more years, until twenty twenty-five. In order to cover twenty-five, twenty-six, right, uh, to be on it. The thing to like, let people know is that ARPA was, will be, money has to be allocated for, by next year and used by no later than twenty twenty-six, right? That's the reason why we wanna make sure that we are appropriating the funds. Um, and, and also because in the various meetings that we've had, um, me and Jared went to the League of Cities, um, this past week and we were definitely, um, told to make sure that, um, we had appropriated the funds. And, um, in, you know, the big ask was that if more funds are given to us in this method, it'll be positive for all the cities. And that we have been able to, um, do what's right. So this is an example of how ARPA has directly impacted. We gave them a bunch of examples, right? But also for them, with the money, with infrastructure, anything else, that this would be a good method for us to continue to use. Um, and how impacted it has been. All right, so. I have those right there. I do see. I do see a chat and the question, would those expenses move to ARPA or just to the other together? Um, Danielle, I'm not sure if you asked this question before or after I mentioned it, but, or Luke mentioned it as well. Um, there are a sec, there's a selection of items that he read through that those, um, are gonna be moved, uh, to ARPA. Um, so they are not, some of them were not included in the budget originally. Some of them were, if they were originally included in the budget, they'll be pulled from the budget and moved for an ARPA discussion. And the way we basically work with ARPA, it's like we have a work session and go through some of the details, approve it, and, um, approve it and then work on it. But, um, for the gateway, even though as an example, right? We might be approving that funding. We still need to work on what the process will look like, you know? Because it could be a sum lump that, that is, um, uh, you know, um, awarded. But we had also discussed, uh, six months check-in to figure out where it's at and, and yearly distributions or whatever it is. So the council still has to have that discussion, and that's a part of the different conversation that we will have in the work session when it comes to, um, more administrative slash details on it. Okay, all right, do we have, um, any other question from the public? Melissa, um, anything, um, Jared, sorry, anything on Facebook? Thank you, um, and I don't see nothing else in the chat as well. And I will remind everybody, please put your name, last name, uh, block and street number on the chat, uh, for me to call upon you. Um, so that way I, I stick to what, um, what I usually ask for, okay? All right, so that is, um, part, part one and two, right? Okay, so, uh, council, if there's anything else you guys could think of, when we have the discussion for ARPA, you guys could bring it up in order for us to ideally before the meeting, so that we could be prepared for the next work sessions that where we discuss ARPA. So that way, um, we, um, zero down what it looks like. Um, I know Chief has been working on writing some grants, including computer grants. So if ideally that will cost, you know, well, well-scheduled for ARPA, and if that costs some of the ARPA, that will release some money for us to do something else. But, um, our team does work really hard to look for grants, and I definitely want to say thank you to the various departments, um, that do that, um, because you guys have been outstanding on making sure that money's being brought up, um, back to the city and accounted for, and also, um, the work that has been done on getting some of the money back from, um, from previous years. So we're, we're doing pretty good on that. All right. Um, so anything else on that portion of it? No, okay, so for the next part of it, um, you guys could decide what to do. Do you guys want to have the discussion to not? Or you guys want to wait, one, the negotiations are final in order for us to have this discussion?
I, I think that it's, it's, it's a question about, um, what we have to do. So if, if the salary discussion can wait until the eleventh, I'm fine with that. Um, just so the public knows, um, sorry, Selena, I didn't mean to take up time. If you, if, if, if you, if you're okay with me talking, I can kind of.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um. Right now in the budget is a three percent raise for all staff, um, except for the FOP, where the budget reflects the status of the negotiations. That deal is not finalized yet. Um, and so the consideration that's before the mayor and council is whether the COLA should be changed from three percent, um, given the state of inflation in, in the economy and that everyone's experiencing. Um, and so my question is, you know, if we change the COLA, that obviously changes the budget by a lot. Um, and so I'm fine if that discussion can wait until the eleventh. That's, if that's allowed. Um, if we have to inhabit tonight, then I think we should have it tonight. But, but I, I don't know exactly what the rule is.
So I would say until nothing's finalized, we could wait on that and then just project, because they have projected some stuff in the budget. But I, my recommendation is like, wait on it, just so we could finalize on one end. Um, so I don't want to put two foot in front of the other, or whatever the saying is, right? The horse in front of the, the car in front of the horse? Yeah, that's not working Spanish, sorry. But, you know, so let's figure out, let's do one step, get that done, and then we'll work as we continue working on the other one. That will be my recommendation, as it has to be done tonight. Because, um, so that's not part of the read-through, a- as we speak on it. That could be worked on, on the eleven, um, and hopefully we have everything else we need for that day. That is my recommendation, and I want to hear from you guys.
I think I would agree with that. I mean, it makes sense to have the final numbers before we, um, make other decisions. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I heard from Valerie, Jared, see your mic open?
Yep, I con, I concur with that. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to have that discussion before we have, um, uh, finalization on the negotiations.
Jimmy?
Do we have any report back on the status, and will we have a report?
So we can. I'm, I'm hoping, but I don't think we could discuss too much into detail that one, but I'm hoping by the eleven we should. But we could.
Okay, does the, uh, does the, I, I mean, we should make sure the city manager and, and the attorney know that we'd be nice if we had, could be wrapped up by the eleven.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. Kamali, um, any questions on that?
Yeah, I just contacted the city attorney this morning, and she's hoping to finalize it by Friday. Attorneys are working on it, and the CBA has to be finalized by Friday, hopefully, hopefully.
Okay, so I see we're all in agreement, so we will have enough time for that to be finalized, have numbers in front of us, and then move forward to what it will look like. Yes? We're good? Okay. Um, so, okay. So Melissa, is there anything else that I need to do today on the agenda?
No, mayor, that's it.
Okay, so council, um, a- as much as I love, um, you guys, I keep to give back, it's like a two-hour difference. Okay, but thank you guys so much, and, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Now you guys are taking forever. I remember that now. All right, it's properly moved and second, any discussion? Absentions, objections? I'm hearing none. Have a wonderful, um, I guess, spring break. Um, city of Marigny with your families, or, you know, enjoy your time. Should be fun. All right, team, I thank you guys so much. I did, uh, um, you know, uh, Director Rosio, Ron is obviously here. Um, CM Cruz is here, Cheryl's here, Chief is here, Alma here. Um, Jared, Pink, and Melissa. I think I didn't miss enough stuff. Thank you guys so much for your work, and, um, I, I miss you guys. Have fun, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. All right, bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.